Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council has been made aware of the passing of a Bridgewater military veteran, Mr. Albert C. Mizerve, passed on July 2nd. Mr. Mizerve served in the United States Marine Corps during the Korean War. I'd ask all those in attendance to please join us for a moment of silence to honor Mr. The first item of business tonight is the approval of the meeting minutes for July 11th, 2023. I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes.
Do we need to do roll calls because he's?
Oh, yeah, sorry. We're going to retake that vote because we do have a remote participant. So all the votes this evening will be roll call votes. I would ask maybe Michael if you could help us with the votes?
Absolutely. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
That is seven in favor and two absent.
Thank you. The motion passes. All right. The next item on our agenda is announcements from the president. We have none. Next item is proclamations. We have none. The next item is the citizen open forum. We welcome and encourage public participation and feedback. If anyone from the public would like to address the council, please come to the podium, state your name and address. And we do ask that you kindly keep your remarks to three minutes. As we approach three minutes, I'll give you the signal. We'd ask that you respect that. If anyone would like to approach, please feel free. Thank you.
Is this on? Doesn't look like it's on.
It is.
It is?
Yep.
Okay.
It is.
Awesome. Bill Wood, 388 Hayward Street, formerly of the town council. I come before you tonight to comment on three items that are on your agenda tonight. Mainly it's term limits, the stipend, which are both considered, being considered for charter changes, and then the Stiles and Hart Park. So on term limits, I don't think no one's ever confused my opinion with anything other than I'm against term limits. Not because it was going to affect me. I only served 11 years, nine months, so even the language within the charter didn't affect me as it was. But everyone sitting at the council needs to have an agenda. When I, I don't mean an agenda like this. What I mean is an agenda for participation in the council. Come to the meeting, participate, work with the constituents, get things done, improve the town of Bridgewater. That's what I mean by an agenda. And so when people run out of agendas, then we can rely on the very informed voters of Bridgewater, of which there are over 18,000 voters right now, registered voters, to make their selection, their informed selection at the polls, and they'll either elect or not elect or recall a participant that's on the council. So that's really the term limit right there. The fact that the voters can, can change the council and can change the, the construction of what's happening before us. And so we don't need to have artificial language in the charter to do that. I think that in some cases, it's because of national politics. Everyone gets excited about Pelosi or McDonnell. Yeah, McDonnell. And, you know, they, they bring it down to a local level and McConnell. And, you know, there's no proof that a changeover of assembly makes any benefit. And if you look at the state of Maine, they, they enforced term limits. The assembly had a massive turnover. And then they adopted marijuana and made it legal. So I, I don't know if that's a benefit or not a benefit, but it happened because there was large turnover. On the stipend, you know, it takes a lot to come to the meetings here. There's a lot of research that, that the team here has to do. There's what I call two beer conversations that happen outside because people need to meet with you. You go to committee meetings and you also have to go to outside board meetings. And so there's a lot of commitment that doesn't happen on other boards. So when someone asks me, why shouldn't other boards get a, get a stipend? Well, it's because the commitment of the council is significantly larger than other boards that are involved. But it also enables, the stipend would enable single parents to participate, right? So it enables other people that can't today participate because they have other obligations. And to be here for three hours in other places for three hours really imposes a hardship on them. And the stipend eases that hardship through either babysitting services or other, other like services. If you look at surrounding towns and other municipalities that have the council form of government, I think every single one of them is getting a stipend. So I think Bridgewater should fairly compensate its, its council through a stipend also. My primary comment here is about the two parcels of the property that you will be considering to purchase tonight. You've seen hopefully all the documentations from the CPC, the recommendations. I had seen maps of, there was, there was a concern about wetlands being within the park near these two parcels, and that wasn't the case. So the, these two parcels really complete a, a puzzle that we've been working on for, I don't know, six or seven or longer years at this point. The other thing, if you haven't seen, there are now drawings of where the parking lots could go. And that's something I spoke about years ago, was the objective of buying the five acres on Broad Street was to enable us to put parking on Broad Street and get cars off the street and open up access to the public. So our open space through CPC and others, having a park like that is very important. And adding these two parcels with the potential for parking within those parcels is extremely important. So I hope you take the lead of the CPC and others and approve this when it comes before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to comment? Please.
Good evening. Carlton Hunt, 80 Austin Street, Bridgewater. I'm going to echo a little bit of what Bill said on a couple of those topics. To the charter changes, I was, with Dennis, was on the first five-year review, and we had a lot of comments and a lot, a lot of things went up to the State House. I would suggest we consider how much we dump on the State House because they have to, and I think the process isn't, correct me if I'm wrong. You guys voted, the charter changes get sent up to the legislature, they send back their changes, acceptance, whatever, and then the town votes to accept. Is that correct? You can answer me later. With respect to the five acres on Broad Street, I will say I'm a CPC vice president chair right now. We had some of the most in-depth discussions regarding that, two parcels. There was a lot of information, a lot of questions. We got most of those answered. I had personally suggested that we have a parking lot in the existing location where the sewer gate is that way, but apparently I drew it too far back. So from a public safety perspective, those two parcels allow a parking lot and a trailhead to be right close to it. There are some major issues with a steep drop off on the backside, but I think those can be resolved. So that's my two points on that. Consider it deeply, and the last point I'll make is, you guys represent the people, not yourselves. So take time with these charter changes to get public input. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the public that would like to comment? Okay. Seeing none, we will close citizen open forum, move ahead to agenda item E, appointments. We have none this evening. So we will move ahead, just do a quick time check. Okay. We will move ahead to item F, hearings. The time is 7:10, and I'm officially opening the hearing for order O, FY23039, laying out and accepting of a private way at Trinity Circle. I will defer to the town manager for an update.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. The planning board has heard the laying out and accepting of a private way, FY23059, and has recommended adoption of, or acceptance of the road under a couple of conditions, which are spelled out in the packet, none particularly major. And so at this point, the, obviously there's a public hearing, but Trinity Circle is on the agenda for laying out and, and no objection internally in terms of DPW, water, sewer, or highway. But again, a couple of things that do need to be remedied prior to the actual transfer. So, but as I state, nothing major.
Great. Thank you. Are there any general questions from the public? Okay. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? I see none.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Nick Flynn. I'm from Trinity Circle, Sixth Trinity Circle. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm a trustee of the HOA over there. I just wanted to give my position in favor of accepting as a public road this evening. The residents of Trinity Circle wouldn't have brought this in front of you unless we felt like we had done everything in our power to, to, you know, to, I'm sorry with, sorry. We wouldn't have brought it in front of you unless we hadn't done our homework with Larry and he had given us the confidence to bring this in front of you. The residents of Trinity Circle also intend to be an inclusive part of the community. We've read and understand the documents and the recommendations made by the planning department to you, and we're fully prepared to cooperate and meet those requirements as set forth by the planning, planning board. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition? All right. I see none. And are there any questions from the town councillors?
Mr. President?
Please, Councilor Chase?
Thank you very much. If I could please throw you to the town manager. I've noted in our packet that a letter dated June 27th, 2023, from the planning board to the town council makes reference to a question raised regarding language on the recorded plan at the registry of deeds stating that the roadway to be known as Trinity Circle is to remain a private way in perpetuity and not to be accepted as a public way by the town of Bridgewater. It just goes on very briefly to say that this matter should be further investigated. And I'm wondering whether, whether we know in fact that this does not constitute a restrictive covenant or otherwise restrict the ability of the town to accept the road.
So that's an excellent question, councillor. The language that the planning board identified in the plan is not reflective of anything that was voted by the planning board when they approved the subdivision. So there's no, no record anywhere that, that, that there was a restriction placed. It happens to appear on the plan. We think it was just an error. So.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councillor Gallagher?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I've been sitting up here for a while and seen many developments come to us for approval. But this is, this is the first time I've, I've seen the, the neighbors, if you will, or the homeowners association come forward saying, we would like you to accept this. So I think that's a good thing. I think we've never seen letters like this before. It seems like the people that do live in that neighborhood are, are ready, you know, would like us to approve the road and have seen that these things, that it's in line with the reasoning for a road to be accepted through drainage, through easements and all that other stuff. So I, I appreciate, I appreciate that letter. I think it means a lot because we usually don't see, see, usually there are neighbors come in and complaining that something isn't complete and would like that completed. But in this case, it's a little different. So I, I certainly for one appreciate that.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from the councillors? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Lawrence Silva from Silva Engineering Associates, and we are the engineering company that did the work here. I know that the comment that you referred to, if I can just give you the quick reason why it was on there, was that when we originally presented the first plans to the, to the board, we were trying to exclude from Trinity Circle the drainage that really didn't pertain to them. Okay? There was, this, this area was the last section of a subdivision in the seventies that was called Torrey Hills. Okay? And when Torrey Hill didn't build out the last section, they came back to the planning board and had it rescinded, but it wasn't done very cleanly. So what happened at that point was the drainage that all came from, from Leggie Street, down along Forest Street, Ash Ted, all of that was dumping into this area. But when the planning board allowed for that last section to be rescinded, they didn't take that into account. So when we came forward with this subdivision, we were taking it into account and allowing for it to pass through and not become part of the subdivision itself. There was some back and forth between the planning board members and some of the town staff. And so some of them wanted this subdivision to take in all that drainage. Okay? And in the first go-arounds, and in a letter back in June of 2017, I laid out that whole history about Torrey Hill, and I, and I was asking the planning board to allow us to just let that water bypass around this small subdivision, but accommodate it, but not within the subdivision. There was opposition to it from the review engineer. And as a result, in the, at that point, that wording of the private way was put into the plans. In subsequent reviews and subsequent iterations of, of the project, we came into full compliance. We took in all the water that was coming from the other streets and brought it through the subdivision, created a drainage basin to be able to handle that was like over two acres in size. And quite honestly, if you go back and look, the town of Bridgewater had already accepted easements to handle that water, and that was our argument before, that it was really the town's responsibility to handle that bypass water. We took it into the project. At that point, when we came into full compliance, that note should have been struck from the, from the set of plans. It didn't. It's reflected in the vote from the planning board that they did not make that language as part of their decision. It was just that that note that was on there from, from June didn't get taken out of there when they made their final decision. So it was really in error that it was carried through. And I just want, for the record, because I know the planning board wanted to have clarification on that.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate the clarity.
Thanks very much for the clarification.
Okay. Are there any remaining questions from the town councillors? All right. Seeing none. The time is 7:19, and I will now officially close the hearing. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. I would ask for assistance with a roll call vote.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just want to make sure that our vote is going to go along with the recommendations of the planning board, to make sure that those things are done, you know, based on the approval.
Right. So we do have a note here that the planning board voted four to one to recommend acceptance with conditions at their 621-23 meeting.
They're just saying that they wanted to make sure all DPW items were addressed prior to acceptance and then receipt of the stormwater maintenance bond.
Do we have an update on that?
I would recommend adding those conditions to the vote.
So to, to amend the initial approval to include the dispositions of the planning board, please.
Okay. We now have an amended motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. I'd ask for assistance with a roll call vote on the amendment. The amendment is to approve with conditions. I'd ask for your assistance with that.
Absolutely. This is a vote to amend.
Amend?
Okay.
To include the conditions.
We're approving the amendment, right?
Yeah, just approving of the, of the layout of Trinity Circle with the amendments, with the dispositions of the planning board listed.
Right. So just specifically, we do the?
Are we doing one vote or two votes?
We already had a motion to approve. We had a motion to amend.
So I think this is?
A motion to amend. Yes. Yes.
Okay. This is, we're approving the motion to amend to include that condition.
Okay. Motion to amend. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Okay. The motion to amend.
Mr. President, you're doing two votes, right?
Yeah. The motion to amend passes. So now we're entertaining a motion to approve as amended. I'd ask for your assistance with a roll call vote to approve as amended.
All right. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. The motion passes. Congratulations. Moving on, we have another hearing. I'll now open, the, the time is 7:22. I'll open the hearing for petition P 2024001, granting of an all alcohol general on-premises license. I'll ask if the petitioner is present and would like to make a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councillors. My name is Matthew Porter. I'm the attorney for Champion's Indoor Golf, Inc. Along with me is Andrew Gilde. Mr. Gilde is the principal of Champion's Indoor, Inc., Indoor Golf, Inc. He'd also be the proposed license manager. So before the board, this is a proposal for a new general on-premises pouring license for 925 Bedford Street. Andrew and his partners are building out a new indoor golf facility, 3,000 square foot facility, five bays, state-of-the-art golf simulators. Andrew's going to be the onsite manager, meaning he'll be there 40 hours per week. He's been in the golf industry for nearly a decade now. Most recently, has been working in Pine Hills in Plymouth, where they've been operating an indoor golf facility similar to what they're building out here, which has alcohol service as well. They've had no issues whatsoever. Andrew lives in Bridgewater. His wife is pregnant, needs to be closer to home. So this gives him an opportunity to build out a brand-new facility within the town. As I said, he's alcohol tip certified. All employees would be required to be alcohol tip certified as well. The main focus on this is, it's just alcohol service as the bays. If you're swinging, you can have a drink while you're doing so. There's a small bar, maybe five or six stools. So the central focus is not on it becoming a bar. It's more so if you're waiting for a bay, you can get service there. So it's an ancillary item to their overall project. Hours are going to be 10 to 10 Monday through Saturday, 10 to 7 on Sundays. And certainly with that, I can answer any questions that the council may have. Mr. Gilde can as well.
Thank you very much. First, I'll ask if there are any general questions from the public? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? I see none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition? I see none. And then I'll ask, are there any general questions from the councillors? Please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, just one brief item. I note that the petition actually incorrectly names the entity which would be the licensee. It identifies it as Champion, singular, Indoor Golf, Inc. And I realize from the supporting documentation that the true name of the corporation is in fact Champions, plural. A minor point, I don't know if we feel it's necessitating an amendment, but nonetheless, the license itself will be predicated on the basis of the petition, not the supporting documents. So I think that the petition just needs to reflect that particular correction.
I do not see that.
It's just on the very first page, the first whereas.
Yeah.
Singular, Champion.
Whereas.
I might look to the town attorney for guidance on that. Is that material to the point where we would want to amend or?
I would. I would amend it.
Okay. Make a motion to amend to reflect Champions, plural.
And I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion to amend in a second. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, and ask for a roll call vote on the amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
It is amended. Thank you. Do we have any additional questions? I think councillor Robinson on Zoom had a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just curious, from my own education for those license requests, is there, is there a limitation of how many we have? I believe, I believe in, you know, as it pertains to retail, there's, there's certain numbers of licenses you can have as a retail, but this is a little bit different. I'm just curious.
I'll defer to the town manager.
That's an excellent question from councillor Robinson, and there are limits to the number of on-premise licenses that the town can issue. I don't have the exact number with me tonight, but I know that there are many ungranted licenses. So there are many licenses that the town can continue to grant. We are at our limit for alcohol stores, package stores, package store licenses, but we have not come close to our limit on, on premise, all alcohol licenses.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions from the councillors?
Thank you. Just a quick question as far as the actual facility. Everything approved with planning board and all that for the building of it?
We are currently still working with the planning board.
Yep.
The building department, right now, we have a couple of things that need to change and change for plumbing, but other than that, we have.
Everything is going in a good direction?
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay. Seeing none. The time is 7:27. I will close the hearing, and I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Congratulations.
Good luck, I salute you.
That completes item F, hearings. We'll move on to item G, licensed transactions. We have none. Moving on to item H, presentations. We do have one presentation tonight. It's a presentation on the charter changes. I'd like to introduce it, and then I'd ask Mr. Ivaldi to come to the microphone, and we do have a PowerPoint to share, and that should be visible to the councillors on Zoom as well. So just maybe some logistics around the presentation. We would ask the councillors to hold questions until the end. So we'll go through the presentation, then we will have a time for questions. I did want to give a little bit of introduction. So the charter changes that we're going to talk about tonight and others in the past have come before the council already. They came before the council in 2021. They came before the council in 2022. And we're looking to sort of bring back some of that discussion for us as a new council to act on. So for us to be informed and be able to kind of weigh in on the charter changes, I thought it made sense to share some history. First, the presentation by the committee that is recommending some charter changes. And then I'll share a little bit of additional history on what the council has already done with those recommendations. So, but first, I'd ask the council to welcome Mr. Ivaldi to share the presentation. Mr. Ivaldi was the chair of a charter review committee and that was tasked with identifying and making recommendations on charter changes.
All right. Dueling laptops here. Greetings, council. Ed Ivaldi, Boxwood Lane. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to review the recommendations of the 2020 Charter Review Committee that were originally delivered to this body back in June of 2021. Although it was certainly disappointing that two years have gone by without much progress, former committee members and myself are pleased to see that it is back on the agenda. And hopefully, we can see some progress in the coming weeks and months ahead. Presentation will last anywhere from 30 to 40 minutes, and as Council President asked, please hold questions till the end. All right, let's see if we can... All right, as for the agenda, it's pretty simple. I'll remind you of how the committee approached its work and then really dive into some of the recommendations. I do want to tell you upfront, however, that this presentation does not include every single detailed recommendation. It would be impossible to do that in one presentation. So for that, you'll have to actually read the updated charter that was delivered with this presentation back in June of 2021. This readout will simply highlight some of the many key recommendations of the committee. Then to wrap up at the end, we'll talk briefly about some options for rollout of the recommendations. So in terms of background, the committee was formed in May of 2020 and pretty much stayed the same throughout the whole year. We did have one resignation that was quickly filled by the council, but the rest of the committee had pretty much stayed the same. There were seven members. We met twice a month for every month throughout the year. And I think for the last three months of the year, we actually met three times during those months so we could get everything done in time. Total 32 meetings throughout the year. First three months, we really focused on organizing, kind of setting our expectations, gathering a lot of data, information that we needed, planning and establishing a schedule to guide our efforts throughout the year. So that was really June through August. From September through November, we focused on developing and distributing a citizen survey and an employee questionnaire. We felt it was critical that we get input on this from the citizenry and from the employee base. We also conducted three public forums to solicit additional feedback. For the final phase, which actually began in December of 2020, we conducted an in-depth review of the charter, line-by-line review of the charter, and held another set of public forums to gather additional feedback to discuss and eventually vote on the recommendations that we were going to deliver. In terms of scoping out our efforts, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel because we knew that there had been a prior Charter Review Committee back in 2014. We knew that the 2017 Rules and Procedures Committee had also made some changes. So we didn't want to start with a blank sheet of paper, but we would try to utilize the prior work of those two committees. This gave us a good baseline from which to start and saved us a lot of additional time and effort. We also realized that much of the original 2010 charter had served us well over the past decade, so we wanted to ensure that we kept what was working well, but we focused on those areas of our government that could use some improvement. And as already mentioned, getting input from the community and from the employees was key in helping us to identify some of those areas of improvement. So now we'll begin to look at some of the recommendations. And the way that we've categorized this, we've sort of got one bucket that we're calling generalized recommendations, and these are sort of charter-wide. You know, there are grammatical changes, things that go throughout the whole charter. And then we have another set of recommendations that are more article-specific. So I'll go through the sort of the highlights of the general recommendations. First thing we did was we added a table of contents. There's no table of contents in the current charter. We also updated many of the definitions that were embedded in the charter, and we added some new definitions because obviously there was a lot lacking from the original charter. We also wanted to update the language in the charter to be more gender-neutral. And by that, we mean we avoided word choices that may be interpreted as being biased, discriminatory, or demeaning to people. Because we have a city form of government, we wanted to bring the charter up to date with its stated form of government, which is identified in Section 1.1 of the charter. It says, "The city of Bridgewater shall be..." The town of Bridgewater, excuse me, shall be constitutionally have a city form of government. So structurally, we are a city, but we can still choose to have the appearance of a town if that's what we want to do. So what we've decided as a committee was we changed every reference to the word "town" to "city" in the charter. We also wanted to have consistent use of the term MGL, Mass. General Law. It was used throughout the charter in different ways, so we standardized that. We made a bunch of grammatical updates to correct errors for improved readability. We also wanted to install in the charter hyperlinks for quicker access to information for the future. So that is really sort of the highlights of the general recommendations. And now what we'll do is we'll get into the article-specific recommendations. So the first thing we did in Article 1 was we moved the definitions which were embedded in Article 1 to the beginning of the charter. So it's its own separate preamble, if you will, to the charter. That's where all the definitions are today. We also replaced in Section 2-1B, short title, right now it says "Home Rule Charter," and we do not have a Home Rule Charter. We did not use the Amendment 80, Article 89, or MGL Chapter 43B, the Home Rule Amendment, to put this charter through. We used a special act process, so our charter is really a special act charter. So we made an update there. That was it for Article 1. Article 2, which is the legislative branch, we did have quite a number of changes. The first one we did there was we wanted to update the how the vacancies were handled for district councilors. And these were, for example, if a councillor moved from one end of town to another end of town and therefore was in a different, now was in a new district, we identified how that was all going to happen in terms of their term. So there were some things that were missing in the charter that we needed to clarify, and that's what was put in that first section. The second section, which was 2-1C, Term of Office, that really had to do with after the election, when did the terms actually start? And the charter right now says it's the second Monday after the election. And so we changed it to actually say the next business day. The reason I've got this highlighted in green is because I was surprised to see that this is actually in the charter already. So this must have got put in with the last round of updates that you made with the redistricting, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so that's already in the charter. Section 2-1D was edited for clarity. We added a prohibition so that if a councillor was ever convicted of a state ethics law violation, this would how it would be handled from a charter perspective. And then we also had the section of term limits in there. We kept term limits in because based on the citizen feedback that we got from the survey as well as the employee feedback, it was overwhelmingly supportive of keeping term limits in. We updated that to change the language. Right now, it says consecutive years, 12 consecutive years, and we changed that to actually say number of times elected or number of terms. So you could have four terms as a district councillor or four terms as an at-large councillor. So essentially, you could serve eight terms if you went from district to at-large. So that would be 24 years that you could serve. Continuing on with Article 2, the committee felt that it was important to have a specific date for the yearly town message, the state of the town message. So we put in the charter that we said it had to happen before March 15 annually. We also clarified the appointment process for filling of vacancies and added a paragraph dealing with the situation where an incumbent is reelected by write-in. So one of you may decide you don't want to run for office, but your constituents write you in anyways. So there's a whole section in there that talks about how that would be handled. Rules and procedures, again, we made some changes to improve accessibility to government by citizens as well as improve communication between the council and citizens. The feedback that we got from the citizens was that they felt very disconnected from what was going on, not only at the council level, but also at the administrative level. And they wanted to put something in the charter that kind of put more structure around the communication. And that's what the language here in this section tries to accommodate. Under 27A, we actually reverted back to the original charter language. This had been changed by the prior Charter Review Committee, and I think the Rules and Procedures Committee, from 30 days to 72 hours. So this basically said that if there was a measure that the public disagreed with, it was only going to give them three days to react to that. And we didn't feel that was enough time to give the citizens. So we put that back to the 30 days, which was in the original charter. As for posting legal notices, we felt that the newspaper postings were ineffective and extremely expensive. So we replaced a lot of that with posting on the town website, using electronic media, adhering to posting requirements of state law, et cetera, et cetera. And then lastly here, the reason this is in blue is because this is one of the items that's actually on your agenda. The other ones, I think there's five of them on your agenda. The other four I've identified here in blue as well. So this is really, this addresses the stipend. And we had recommended a stipend of $3,000 for each councillor. That is still well below the benefits that are being received by elected officials in other communities in our area. It ranges anywhere from $3,000 up to $8,000 or $10,000. So we felt $3,000 was at the lower end of the scale. Okay, moving on to Article 3. This is elected officials. Our goal here was to make it as open as possible for employee involvement in the sort of the elected arena, if you will, without violating conflict of interest laws or standards. So as a result, we've allowed employee eligibility for non-council elected appointed positions. However, that requires an annual council approval or attorney approval. Right now, employees are not allowed to hold elected positions or appointed positions. So we listen to what the employees were telling us as well as the citizens, and we try to make accommodations for that to happen. However, employees cannot be elected onto the council. That's still something we don't agree with. As far as conversations and recommendations that we receive directly from the trustees, they submitted a whole bunch of, a whole section of recommendations to us that we reviewed with them. I don't want to go into those in details tonight, but it basically expanded the scope of the trustees' domain. It addresses how they manage assets, such as the collection of collections and gifts that they receive, and provides more detail on how the library director position is filled. Then we also now have the recall provision. This is another one of the items on the agenda for tonight. This was adopted by the 2017 Rules and Procedure Committee. We basically adopted their verbiage with some minor grammatical changes. We did, however, reduce the number of voters required to file for an at-large recall from 500 to 400. We thought that 100 votes, you know, made a difference, so we reduced that number. And then lastly here, we also agreed that the city clerk positions should stay elected because there were some people that felt it should be appointed. All right, moving on to Article 4, which is the town manager.
Bless you. Thank you.
Section 4-1, this is one of the items on the agenda for tonight. Basically, the verbiage that we put in here clarified the relationship between the council and the city manager. And this really reflects some of the feedback that we received from the citizen survey and the employee questionnaire that better checks and balances were needed between the council and the town manager. We also thought that it would make sense to have the town manager on a three-year renewable term. And we wanted to remind people that the city manager or the town manager must serve at the will of the council and is bound by whatever legislative policy action the council must take. The next item here really had to do with just making sure that there was a better connection between the council and the town manager in terms of planning to maximize success. We wanted to make it easier to get citizens' voices heard. Beyond the three minutes that we have at the council for citizen open forum, there's some language in there that promotes a better partnership and enables better two-way effective communication in multiple formats. And then lastly here, we wanted to make sure that there were no less than quarterly sessions between the town manager and the departments and community-based organizations to promote continuous collaboration. Again, it's all about keeping the communication pipeline open. This slide is pretty much self-explanatory. It really has to do with when the town manager needs to take a temporary leave of absence, how that absence is handled. I would like to point out that we do not feel it should be automatic or mandatory that the assistant town manager be the one to fill that position. We thought of several scenarios where the town manager should have the flexibility to fill the position temporarily with the most capable person at that time, which could in fact be the assistant town manager, or it may be one of the department heads. But we didn't want to, you know, sort of mandate to the town manager, tell him or her that it had to be the assistant town manager. All right, moving on to Article 5. The only key change that we're recommending here is how the city attorney is appointed. This change is being recommended to better align the legal function with that of the council, whose primary role is to enact laws and establish administrative policy for the city as a whole. This is also consistent with many other municipalities where the council appoints the attorney to minimize any potential conflicts of interest with the executive branch. Furthermore, this recommendation aligns with other city-appointed positions that come with a limited term with the option to reappoint. All right, getting into Article 6, which talks about financial management. The first item here has to do with the mid-year review of the budget. Now, this was actually in the original charter, in the 2010 charter. The 2014 Charter Review Committee updated it, but it was actually removed by the 2017 Rules and Procedures Committee. Our committee felt it was important to have a media review of the budget to ensure transparency on actual versus budgeted expenses, so we put that in. We also added a statement that requires the identification of currently-approved projects and their status. The idea here is to separate currently-approved projects from new projects and give their status. And lastly, we reverted back to the content again of the original charter, which gives the council a responsibility for selecting the independent auditor. This was changed to make the annual independent audit truly independent. We felt that the council, being one step removed from the day-to-day operations, would give a broader view of the scope of their audit. To that point, we believe the direction given to the auditor needs to come from the council and not the city manager. Article 8, I'm sorry, Article 7, there were no major changes here, just some minor clarifications and wordsmithing. Article 8, which is about citizen participation mechanisms. What we did here is we specified a timeframe for the clerk, the city clerk, to hand off any petition to the city attorney. And that's basically within one business day. So if the clerk receives a petition from citizens, within one day, that has to go to the city attorney. We also increased the petition time from 10 to 30 days, which gives citizens more time to initiate a protest on a particular measure. 10 days to gather, in some cases, what might be several thousand signatures is not enough time. So we felt that 30 days is more adequate for the citizens at this point. And lastly here, we added an email distribution to reflect more current types of communication. All right, Article 9. This is general provisions. This first section here, Conflicts of Interest, we did some restructuring to make it clearer, better to understand, easier to understand, but there was no content change. We updated the computation of time to minimize confusion as to when a timed event starts. That was very confusing. There were several different spots in the charter that were sort of, you know, conflicting with one another on that, so we standardized that. And then the last thing here we did was we eliminated confusion by breaking the removal process into two separate processes. So this is where you have somebody who's appointed to one of the town committees. For whatever reason, maybe they decide they're not going to show up. So four or five meetings, they don't show up, so you want to remove them. There are different processes for whether it's appointed by the council or the person's appointed by the town manager. So we broke those apart. Okay. Lastly here, we added this new section, Article 9. And this was added to clarify the enforcement of the charter. And this was really based on feedback and general perceptions of the public that it's unclear who is responsible for ensuring adherence to the charter. So we see things that, you know, should be happening, but they're not. And people say, "Well, how could that happen?" So we added this new section and just some of the verbiage here, I'll read it to you. It says, "The responsibility of all elected officials are to ensure the enforcement of and compliance with this charter. In the event that there is an allegation of a violation of the charter or failure to follow its provisions, such allegation must be referred to the council president, who shall in writing cause notice to be given to such agency or employee via the city manager directing compliance with the charter." So this adds some formality around, you know, when people feel that something in the charter is not being followed. And last but not least, this is Article 10. Now, this was originally put in the first charter in 2010 to manage the whole transition from our prior former government to the new former government. But since most of that's already happened, there's really no need to have a lot of that in the Article 10. The only thing that we left in there was the time of taking effect. So that's the only thing you'll see in Article 10. All right, so where does that leave us now? So in terms of looking at options for how we would like to see these rolled out, there are two aspects to answering the question of rollout. One is the timing, and the second is how is it packaged? One is the timing, and the second is how is it packaged? The previous process, back in 2015, took approximately four years before getting to the voters in 2019. Started in 2015 and got presented to the voters in 2019. And then once it got to the voters, it was packaged all or nothing. So ultimately, it failed, so nothing happened. So the approach that we're recommending this time includes having a small number of questions on the ballot that give voters more choices without sacrificing the whole charter at one time. We suggest bundling all the general recommendations into one single question because those are sort of the, you know, the non-confrontational kinds of things. And then have a single question for each of the article-specific items. So maybe for the recall provision, you'd have a separate question for recall. You'd have a separate question for term limits and for the stipend. That's just an example. There's obviously no, no technical limit to the number of questions you can have on the ballot. However, less is better because the more you have, you're going to confuse the voters. So using this approach would increase the likelihood of some of these recommendations passing. So next steps. Obviously, there are several steps listed on this slide, most of which you, as the council, have control over. The two major deliverables include the charter and what you end up finally deciding the changes should be, and then the special act itself, which would actually include the ballot questions. Although we certainly understand that you have every right to disagree with our recommendations, our hope is that you make every effort to understand the rationale behind the recommendations as the citizens and employee surveys provided much guidance in our decision-making process. Once everything is sent to the state legislature, it will be important to engage with our, our state rep Angelo D'Amelia and our state senator Walter Timmelti to help usher it through the state approval process. Remember, the first time we went through this process back in 29, 2009, 2010, the charter was approved in December of 2009, and it was before the voters in 2010. So in four months, we got the charter from the hands of the voters at town meeting to the hands of the voters to vote. So that was pretty impressive. I'm not saying that we need to do it in four months, but we should be able to get it done quicker than four years, the way it was done previously. So that is it. I would thank you again, and if your time allows, any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
If I could add maybe a five minutes worth of comments, and then we could do questions collectively. So maybe just to frame this a little bit more. So for those who are listening, our charter is essentially the Constitution of 2010. How all of our citizens got together and said, you know, this is how we want to run the water, and we write it down. When we make changes to that, there is a link through the process to sort of decision those changes and approve those changes. And it's difficult, sorry, it's difficult by intention because, you know, big massive changes to government structure, you know, should be slow-moving so that people give it the right thought. So, but that, that's the background. And in our existing charter, we do have a clause that says every six years, the town council provides for, for a review of the town charter. So it asks this committee, or creates this committee every six years, and says, please look at the charter and come with recommendations. I should call out, you know, it, the recommendations don't have to be accepted, but they are presented to the council as a package. And what, what would then happen is a counselor would then take interest in one of them, or maybe all of them, and help sponsor those through the rest of the processes on, on Ed's list. So, so that's just a little bit of background. When we do approve, the ordinances have to be approved here by a two-third vote. They then go to the state. As Mr. Ivaldi mentioned, they're then sponsored and sort of shuttled through the state process, where they are often also changed. Somebody there might change the language or try to align it. And then it's voted, and then it goes to the governor, who could also potentially make changes or, or vote yes or no. And then ultimately, it comes back to us. And what comes back to us may not be, and often isn't, the same thing that we submit. So it sort of goes through levels of review and changes, and then ultimately goes to the voters. So when this was originally presented, we got together and, and we sort of looked at a few things. We said, what is this process? Like, how do we just make sure we all understand it? And then how should we prioritize and chunk out all of these recommendations or some subset? And maybe just to speak to the, the first two things, the process, you know, we, we learned about the state process, and we did get advice, similar to what was mentioned, that in the past, we sent a big package up to the state, and they, it's really difficult for them to handle a big package with a lot of changes. It's hard for them to, to shuttle it through, and we sort of got some advice that said, you know, maybe, you know, smaller chunks would be easier to, to digest and modify and manage through that, through that process. So that was, that was part of it. You know, we also learned that a big risk with this is if you have two changes that are partnered with each other, one goes and the other one fails, you potentially could break the charter because they expect sort of both provisions to be in there equally. So you can end up with a charter where you, you sort of give somebody some rights, and maybe you had intended to take those rights away from someone else, but that one failed, so you, so you don't have balancing language. So there's, there's a sort of like a lot of complexity to this. And so, so the town council had, held a workshop on February 8th, 2022. I encourage all of the counselors to go back. It's on YouTube. We walk through the process, we walk through a prioritization of the, the discussion, and then we actually talk about some of the changes there. So they, the town council went through that prioritization process, and we essentially came out of that with 11 sort of chunks of, of changes, not all of the changes that we saw, but the subset of those 11 that we thought would be sort of worth discussing and kind of prioritizing. Those all went to the Rules and Procedures Committee. The Rules and Procedures Committee reviewed and actioned all of them and did look at the charter in its entirety to make sure that changes or proposed changes wouldn't break something else. And then right about the time where those, those 11 were sort of ready to come back, this big sea change happened where we got the new census and we had to redistrict. So the odds of us getting all of these changes through the state level at the same time that we're urgently trying to get the redistricting changes through to be compliant, we just knew that those two things couldn't happen in parallel. So we essentially paused the charter changes, with the exception of one that we could sort of put in there because it made sense to go with redistricting. And we allowed the redistricting package to go through. That did take some time. At that time, we were told that because of all of the towns that are redistricting and some of like the COVID backlog, it could be as long as two years to get a change sort of through that process and back to us. I don't know if that's changed, but that sort of informed us, you know, that maybe we had a little bit of time to, to do it right. So now those redistricting changes went through, we had the new vote in, in January, and now we're ready to bring this back up. So my intention tonight is to bring everyone up to speed on the history so that if there is something that you're interested in sponsoring, you can react to it. If there's something that you see in front of us, you have the history and know sort of how to find even more of the history. But I wanted to kind of get all of us onto the same page so that, you know, we can sort of react as an informed participant. So that's, that's it. Let me just do a quick check of my notes. I will also say, actually, I'll, I'll step through the 11 just because I think it's maybe worth calling out which of those we, we talked about. So the first one was FY 21012. It was a general change, and this was the one that was pulled into the redistricting. We had prioritized that. We also had put forth an amendment for correcting all of the typographical errors. There were many, a significant number. So we, as the Rules and Procedure, Procedures Committee, we decided to actually recommend not approving that one and handling it different. We said that one needs just its own thing, that's an enormous sort of typo and term correction. So the Rules and Procedures made a recommendation not to amend, not to move forward with the typographical changes until a better process was determined. We did recommend the town manager temporary absence. We did make changes to it. So the version you see is the Rules and Procedures attempt to clean up some inconsistencies that we thought we saw. The library trustees, we also acted on. That is a significant change with a lot of complexity. So although that came back out of Rules and Procedures, it's not in front of us now just because of the packaging, which I'm trying to sort of keep what would go to the state lean. We did also have an ordinance to, to formally vote on the town versus city. I will say, in our workshop, we did sort of comment quite a bit on this, and there wasn't at the time much support for moving to city. So we thought the town was sort of associated with our identity. And the Rules and Procedures Committee also recommended not moving forward with that. But I will note, the recommendations that came from the Charter Review Committee did assume that change, so you will see the term city in a few places, and we would need to clean that up, put it back to town if that doesn't move forward. There's term of offices. We decided, we recommended not moving forward on that because we found out that it was actually a duplicate of another. We had the election eligibility, the stipend that we talked about, recall provision, city manager term of office, and then we had the town attorney. The town attorney, we did, we did review at Rules and Procedures, and also made a recommendation not to proceed with that change. We thought it was a sort of a, created a significant sort of shift in, in government. So at the time, we, we were not in favor of that change. So those were the 11 that moved forward out of the presentation. I do again encourage everyone to look at the YouTube from February 8th, 2022, to see the workshop conversation there. With that, I'd ask the council if there are any questions for either Mr. Ivaldi or myself?
I, I have several. How can I get that?
Yep. Counselor Robinson, please feel free.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Ivaldi, thank you so much for the presentation. It was really clear, it was helpful to hear. And also thank you to you and the other members for us looking through that many meetings and putting the, this work together. So thank you for that. A couple, and, and, Mr. President, thank you, because I was actually going to ask which specific articles have been discussed, and I will go back and look at that workshop, but thank you for outlining this as well. I did, I was curious myself, just from a location standpoint of, of city versus town. And, you know, I can watch the workshop and certainly listen to what some of the conversation was, but I was curious, in that conversation, was it discussed, are there other examples of any other towns in the Commonwealth that are in that same situation where they have a city form of government but have kept the name, or kept "town" as a name? So that was one question. My next question is, what's, is wouldn't assistant town manager not be suitable to be acting in the absence of the town manager? That, I'm not sure I fully understand. And then I didn't fully hear about the audit process, but I would mind hearing that part repeated in terms of, it sounded like it should be, it was recommended to be done by the council versus the town manager's audit process? So that was a question of clarity.
So maybe I could answer this, the example of other town versus city, and then I'd ask Mr. Ivaldi to address the assistant town manager and the audit. That's okay? So there are multiple examples of other, other towns that took on the city form of government. And it's a very specific term used by the state for how we run. It is a city government. But they, like we did, said, we still want to be known as a town. And in that presentation, in that discussion from February 8th, we do sort of lay out, I think, some examples of that. We also lay out the implications of making that change. And, you know, without specific dollars, talked a little bit about the downstream cost of, you know, essentially sort of like rebranding a government versus the benefit. So, so those details are on there. But yes, we are, we are like many other towns where we have the form of government but identify as a town.
Was there, was there, sorry, just to follow up for that, is there a reason why, and by the way, I'm not suggesting it, it's truly, I'm just a question for education here, why then the town manager would not be an elected official?
We didn't include that in that discussion. So I think like the idea of the, the, the city form of government we have is one of multiple options available at the state level, and the option that we have is a council with a city manager, with a town manager. There are other, there are other options, though. For example, a mayor with a town administrator. But that, that wasn't part of our conversation.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. And then I, the, whether or not, the scenario when the assistant town manager would not be appropriate to be acting as town manager?
Yeah, so an example there would be, what if the assistant town manager was, wasn't available, was on vacation or was ill? And yet the charter is demand, you know, says that person has to take that position. So that would be just one item. Another would be, i- if the town is facing a particular issue at the time, the required special skills, and the, and the assistant town manager didn't have those skills, but one of the department heads did, you're limiting the town manager, or the town manager's ability to put the right person in at that time to cover.
Thank you. And then the last one was, I guess, Susie, you were looking for just clarification on the recommendation for the town council to hire the auditors versus the town manager. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think the feeling, again, there was that we felt that had, being one step away from the day-to-day operation of the town had benefit from an auditing perspective. You'd get a, a more non-biased, potentially non-biased view of how things are going. Not that the town manager is having any influence over that, but there's always a risk. So we felt that it was really, you know, that having the council select the auditing firm and do, you know, give the direction on what needs to happen was better for our town, was a better option for our town in terms of managing risk in the future.
Great, thank you.
Can I just make one other comment, too, on, there are many towns in, in this, in the Commonwealth that have a city form of government that kept the term town, but there are many that went to city as well. It's, it's sort of a split, you know, some decided. We can still be considered a town. We were just saying that in terms of the charter being consistent, it says at the very beginning of the charter, we have a city form of government, but then we call ourselves town in the charter. We were just saying, make every reference to say city, but externally, we don't have to change any signage or anything. We can still consider ourselves a town from that perspective. It was more charter consistency.
Thank you.
And, and sorry, if I could just ask one final question. This seems very obvious, but since, so this is news or new knowledge in terms of understanding that this, this charter actually is fully approved. So is the assumption then that we are operating on the old charter?
I, I could take a crack at it, but I would actually maybe invite other counselors to weigh in. So I, I think the idea is our form of government allows us to change when we think change is needed. And so the idea is, I believe, every six years, we encourage residents to provide feedback and identify things that might be priorities for change, and then the council could weigh in on them. So if, if I'm understanding the question, I think it's based on history, but we, we will always have the opportunity to, to revise it if new cha, if changes are needed. I don't know if that answers the question, Susie?
I think what I'm asking is since this, there were new articles proposed, since those have not been approved, so we are not operating today in accordance with those new articles.
Oh, I see, so.
What are, what's, what are we operating with?
Yeah.
The previous version of the charter, then, correct?
There, there is one version of the charter. The current version of the charter is the current version of the charter. I think there are recommendations to change that that come from the Charter Review Committee and individual counselors. We've also had recommendations for change that were driven by redistricting, state law occasionally will, will, will create a change. So I think, like our admin code and the rest of the rules, you know, there are always opportunities, I think, to change, but the voted version is the current version. opportunities, I think, to change, but the voted version is the current version.
Prior to the redistricting, no charter changes had been made. That was the first time we changed the charter.
Correct, yeah.
Based on redistricting, right.
Yep. But I think, you know, characterizing it as old, or like, not the current version, I think that’s incorrect. We do have a current version that we operate from.
It’s not the original.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. Counselor Lindy, I see you have a question?
Yes, thank you. It’s more of a thank you than anything else. Because Susie asked such good questions, I had one on the audit as well, which is already covered, but I appreciate very much the Council President bringing this forward to get it back in our view, so we can act on it, get it done, and also, for Ed Ivaldi for sticking with this even though the committee had expired, and just putting it in such clear terms that we can all understand it. I will go back and review that meeting, too, and get on the path to getting this really complicated process. I think we’ll have better luck, because we do have a new senator who, I think, will help push us, push it through to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? We have an additional question?
No, I just want to thank, thank you, Mr. President, I just want to thank Ed for coming back in. I know it’s been a long time, and it’s been frustrating that it’s taken this long, but I think we’re finally making some headway, and I know later on in the agenda, we have, we have four of these recommendations that we’re going to start to take up, and I think it’s important. But as far as the term “city” or “town” language is in the charter, I believe that everything that’s been filed on Beacon Hill relating to charter changes, the preamble to the legislation always says, “The city known as the town of Bridgewater.” That’s kind of how we’re known, and that’s everything that comes into this town through the state is a city, the city known as the town of Bridgewater. That’s how we are referred to, based on the charter that was passed in 2010. And that’s similar to the town of Braintree. Their form of government is very similar to ours. The only difference is they elect a mayor and we hire a manager. But they are known as a city known as the town of Braintree. They did not want to give up that word “town” either. But when we get to the items, or whenever, if we don’t discuss them tonight, the issue of assistant town manager shall take over, I mean, we need to discuss that, because I think that’s important, because if the town manager is not able to make that decision, if he becomes, you know, incapacitated, you know, then, if there’s no one there to make the decision, does that fall on us? The charter says, okay, the assistant town manager will act. But if the town manager is taking a planned leave of absence, then maybe he or she should have that right to choose whether it’s not the assistant, someone else, but we can have that discussion. But I think we need to take into consideration, it’s possible that the town manager may be incapacitated and not able to make that decision. And the other thing that we need to be cognizant of is, in the, I believe, in the contract for the town manager, there is a clause in there that if there are any significant changes to the charter that may, that affect him and the operation of the town, that the contract could be considered null and void. We need to keep our mind to that. I don’t think anything of what we’re bringing forward today would affect that, would affect his authority, other than the assistant town manager thing. We can clarify that later, but thank you for bringing this forward. I think it was a good step, good start, and we’ll see what happens.
Any additional questions? So, maybe I’ll just close it out with one final statement. I think, you know, these changes are very difficult, and what we found, I was chair of the Rules and Procedures that went through them, and what we found is, very few of them can just sort of be taken as written. We had to get legal advice on a lot of them, even something as easy as changing a term somewhere might actually have a legal implication, similar to like, a contract that may agree to. So, I think as you get involved and learn more about, you know, things maybe that are of interest to you, that you might want to sponsor, I really encourage you to dive in and solicit some legal advice on the terms to make sure that, you know, they just sort of fit into the larger picture of the charter. And I also would like to thank Mr. Ivaldi and the Charter Review Committee. As you saw, they did an amazing amount of work, and we appreciate the suggestions that came out of it. Okay. Moving on from there to the town manager’s report, item I. You start with the mobile station update?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mobile station update, we have, I think, as everybody knows, but I’ll remind folks that we did take the old mobile station at 46 Summer Street by eminent domain several months ago, and in the intervening time, we hired a landscape architect to develop a plan for that property, which includes integrating or creating accessibility between the Flora Little Park and the mobile station property. Also asked her to develop a site plan and development proposal after going through a fairly robust public planning process, similar to what we’ve gone through with the senior center campus planning. So, that is underway. We’ve had some initial discussions with the BIA leadership and have appointed your town clerk, who’s also on the BIA board, to an ad hoc committee along with Parks and Rec representatives, Bob Ruly, and a representative from BSU to serve as sort of an ad hoc committee to guide that project through the public planning process. In any case, we did commission a structural assessment of the building. That’s been completed. The structure is fine, and we’re just awaiting a written report on that. Detailed survey of Flora Little Park has just been completed, and we have shared that with the ad hoc planning group, as well as the landscape architect. So, that is actually our first survey that we have done in-house, and quite proud of that. We’ve got a whole stack of survey work to complete on a number of different projects, but this was the first one that engineering department completed, and it’s very impressive. But regardless, we will have, Melissa, the landscape architect, has already drawn up some concept drawings. She’ll refine those based upon the survey of the Flora Little Park and bring those to the ad hoc group, and then use those options or revisions of those options to at least show in a public planning session. Based on final recommendations of, which will be based upon public input, we’ll have the architect then design alterations to the building, presumably have an architect design alterations to the building. There is a possibility we’d simply tear the building down, but since it is structurally sound and could serve a useful purpose, my preference would be to keep it, at this point at least. In terms of a timeline, planning process, we’re trying to complete the planning process by early spring, design work completed by May or June, and then grant submissions submitted at the beginning of July. So, that’s roughly the timeline. I think, as the council knows, timelines are always a little tricky, but that’s what we’ve mapped out so far. But happy to answer any questions on that.
Do we have any questions for the town manager? Counselor George?
Mr. President, through you to the town manager. Can you, and I may have missed it, go over who’s on the ad hoc committee, again?
Deniz Lewenberger from BSU. She’s the executive vice president, BSU. Bob Ruly, our own Bob Ruly. Jim Small, our Parks and Recreation superintendent. We’ll have another member from the Parks and Rec Board as soon as they decide who that member will be, and then Merrily Hunt. That rounds it out.
Okay. Second question I have is, you know, going through the planning stage, which I appreciate for long-term, do we have a short-term plan to clean that place up?
We’ve actually gone in there and cleaned out the overgrowth and the brush earlier this spring. Paul DeCosta got his guys in there again, probably about two or three weeks ago, cut back again because stuff had grown so rapidly, and so, he will keep going in and cutting back as we go along, just to keep it somewhat a little bit cleaned up.
I believe, is there still a clothing donation box there?
Boy, I think that was removed.
Was it removed?
Pretty sure it was removed. I can, we’ll double check.
And then, within the planning, do you believe that the sign that’s been there forever that looks terrible is going to stay? Because if not, I’d like to see that come down.
That’s one of the things on Paul’s list, is to remove the sign.
Okay. I mean, we’ve got fall, you know, students coming in, we’ve got visitors coming in. I know that we can only get to some point, but I truly believe that we can clean that up much better for the winter, and then, when the spring comes, we all look forward to seeing some significant progress in bringing that to whatever is decided. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay. Let’s move on to the High Street Bridge closure update.
Nothing terribly new to report there. Work is currently on schedule and on budget. The bridge abutments are the current focus, so they’ve drilled down and are pouring those as we speak, and just generally, all proceeding is planned, so.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just as an aside, any historical items been discovered in the digging process?
Actually, nothing that I’ve heard of. I can certainly follow up with that. PAL, which is a, can’t remember what PAL stands for, something architect, well, whatever it stands for, has actually been contracted to be on-site during certain phases, and they were on-site during the bridge demolition and the dam demolition. So, their job is actually to identify historic artifacts or issues that exist as it comes out. They are also there to document every step of the removal, so that we have a really good record of what came out of there, so, but I’ll find out.
All right. Curious. Okay. Let’s move ahead to item C, flags at the Memorial Building.
Flags at the Memorial Building. Happy to report that we do have a flag up. We do have a little bit of additional work to do there to stabilize the lattice work and the pole that it hangs from, but it is up. We will be looking at new flag poles, possibly at the Memorial Building, if we determine that the existing pole is not suitable to take the pressure of a flag that’s constantly flapping in the wind, but definitely at the library, and, you know, folks have mentioned that, too. So, we’re looking at a new flag pole, definitely for the library, possibly at the Memorial Building, but currently, the flag pole at the library has no rigging, so we can’t hang anything on it, but as soon as we get a new pole installed there, we’ll see a flag on that location as well.
Thank you. Any questions? I just have a quick question. I know there was a lot of excitement around getting the flag back on the Memorial Building, and I know that the main reason it took some time is because we recently renovated that, and the way that the pole is positioned, if the flag is kind of too big, it’ll stress the lattice work and break what we just repaired, right? So, just out of curiosity, do we feel comfortable putting a flag up in this interim period? Or perhaps, should we wait?
That’s a great question, and I think, right now, given summer, although you wouldn’t know it by today, but summer weather is, you know, fairly conducive to hanging a fairly light flag on the pole. So, we’re comfortable doing that when we get into the winter months. It does take a little bit of effort to put up the flag and take it down. It’s not just, you know, raising and lowering it. So, if we head into the winter months and it looks like we’ll see significant weather, then we’ll remove the flag that’s there now, but...
Great. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item D, energy aggregation update.
Energy aggregation, we went out for a request for qualifications. We issued that in June. We received two responses last month, and we have a review committee that is in process, excuse me, in process of scoring those submissions. As I mentioned, two firms submitted proposals. We’ll very likely interview both firms. They’re both quality firms. We will interview those firms in early September. We’ll make a selection very soon after that interview process, and then, we would expect work to begin immediately after that, the consultant’s work to begin in conjunction with the town work right after that. Generally, in very general terms, the process will take about one year. That could stretch longer, depending on the Department of Public Utilities’ review of the work that the town and the consultant provide and the plan that we provide, DPU. So, there’s no really, there’s no restriction on when DPU has to act, so our work can be done in about a year, and it’ll depend on DPU review to see if we can really adhere to that one-year timeline. So, that’s what we have going on with energy aggregation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the council? Okay. Seeing none, we’ll move on to item E, Town Hall Charging Station Policy.
Town Hall Charging Station Policy, we have been adhering to the same general policy, very brief policy we adopted when we first installed the stations, and that was, town vehicles have preference, but they’re not supposed to be parked in the charging stations if they’re not needing a charge. So, we did revisit that most recently, and right now, what we’re about to, the policy we’re about to implement, because we’ve got increased interest from residents for the use of the charging stations, our policy will be that they’re available for public use anytime outside work hours, and we’ll arrange for municipal vehicles to be out of those, out of those, those charging stations, and outside of work hours, it’ll be on a first-come, first-served basis for residents to come use. So, that’s basically where we are. I have a draft of the new policy, which, I apologize, I meant to leave it with you tonight, but that basically says exactly what I just said.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the town manager? Counselor Gallagher?
Thank you. Mike, on that note, so, if a resident, do you think that’d be by appointments? If a resident wants to use the charging station, would they most likely call your office and say, you know, “I want to charge my car on Saturday, 10 to 11,” I don’t know how long it takes, but, you know, 10 to 11, and they would have a scheduled appointment? Would it be first-come, first-served basis?
Yeah, no, it would be just first-come, first-served. I think it would be very difficult for us to track an appointment schedule.
So, you have a lot of cars out there, and usually, usually, when I see them, they are plugged in, usually. So, that would have to be worked out, so they don’t interfere with the public, and it may be something to think about, if it’s feasible, if there’s going to be parking spots, but maybe the mobile station would be a good spot for a couple of charging stations, you know, but...
We actually, we’re looking at some grant funding to try to do charging stations at the library. That’s a good location, that’s a great location for, you know, the public to come and use, easy in, easy out. But, yeah, I think it’s safe to say, the school, the district has charging stations at the New Mitchell School, which evidently are very popular. We will begin to look at charging stations with every new renovation we do. For instance, the sewer plant upgrades, we want to see charging stations there, at least a couple, although the public probably is not going to go to the sewer plant to charge vehicles, but for our own employees, quite honestly, it’s also, and for our own vehicles.
Right. And as we continue to focus on downtown revitalization, you know, if people had a place to charge their car, they may partake in some of the businesses downtown while that’s charging, if we had that feasibility, you know?
Good point.
Great.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay. That concludes the town manager’s update. Thank you. Moving on to item J, discussions. We have one discussion tonight, hosted by me, on Town Council Resident Communication and Engagement Strategy. This is, I think, a relatively quick topic for tonight, mostly trying to introduce it with the hopes that we can maybe get the conversation going. I do have a handout that I’ve given the counselors. I’ll talk through it. It’ll be posted with the meeting notes when those are posted, and I apologize to the council members on Zoom. It'll be posted with the meeting notes when those are posted, and I apologize to the council members on Zoom. I'll try to sort of walk through it. But essentially, I'm hoping to focus tonight's conversation on two specific ideas. One is an idea that is required in our charter, and I'm looking for just some conversation and maybe guidance on how to implement that. And the second is maybe more of a topical conversation on, you know, there are some committees in town that have formal processes for community engagement outside of their meeting. So, for example, like office hours. And so those are, those are the two topics I want to talk about. The charter sort of required engagement strategy, and then, you know, do we want to, as a council, come up with something, some predictable engagement strategy outside of what we all do individually? And my hope is to maybe seed the ideas tonight, and then maybe get them into a committee that could flush out the ideas and come back with a recommendation. So, the first of the two items is, in our charter, in section 2.3, paragraph 6, there's a statement that says, "The council president shall call no less than two meetings of the general public each fiscal year for the purpose of obtaining public input to the policies of the town. The meeting agenda and format shall be determined by the town council, but shall be designated, or sorry, designed to obtain public input to the policies of the town. Members of the public may submit potential items to the agenda in accordance with the rules adopted by the town council, and the public shall be given at least 14 days' notice of the date and time of such meeting." The notices will be posted, and then the town council may provide additional venues for such posting. So, the intention here is, we as a council, twice a year, create an agenda with the help of residents where we can sort of solicit their feedback outside of, you know, sort of the agenda, kind of open comment process here. And the idea, again, is it is a public meeting, so we do have to stick to a posted set of topics. But we as a council would agree on some topics. We would invite the public to come and talk to us about those topics and share their opinions. And then we also sort of figure out the rules and approach for that type of meeting. I think it has been done in the past. My understanding is it wasn't hugely successful, sparsely attended. And so my hope is that as we sort of engage with this, you know, we figure out some strategies to really drive some engagement and some attendance. So, so that's the first item. My inclination is to maybe see if Community and Economic Development Committee would want to take this and maybe come up with some strategy and some ideas for building the agenda and hosting the meeting with input, you know, from our town attorney, town manager, and us. And then, you know, ideally, we get that, the first one scheduled for the fall and another one for early spring. So, that's the first idea. I'll pause and maybe open that up for discussion and feedback, or maybe prior lessons learned, if any. Are there any thoughts on that idea? Or any history on this? Councilor Gallagher?
Just, just a couple. I know that we've had informational, councilors have hosted informational meetings in the past. I think, I think when Council Wood was on the council, he had one, I think it was, I think it was on, it wasn't on number one, or it was on something else, I think. Anyway, and he got it, I mean, there was a decent turnout there. It was a give and take, but I think it's a good idea, I mean, that we follow it. We haven't really, as a rule, have followed it for 10, 15 years, but I know there have been attempts, and it's, to me, it's, it's, I understand having an agenda item, but that's going to be hard to let the public know that we have to stick to just those agenda items, because they may want to come in and just, you know, vent. And we should be able to have a dialogue with them, and not like council, not like comments, citizens' open forum, where they just give us an idea or vent a little bit, and we can't really, you know, engage them. This, this should be something where we could engage them, not argue, but go back, you know, have a give and take instead of sticking to agendas. But, yeah, I'm open to anything. I think it's good, at least we give this a try. You know, the Economic Development Director is doing, you know, a similar thing now with the downtown, which is great. You know, and we could include that in there, so we have the budget, when the budget comes out. If we have debt exclusions, things like that, we have informational meetings to talk about these, these items too. So, I'd like to see it implemented, give it a shot, you know, before, before, you know, sometime in the spring or maybe, but.
If I could, just quickly, I just weigh in on the posting of the meeting. That's probably more because of my advice over the course of time. I think it's an open meeting violation to do the kind of running dialogue, especially if you're going to have a quorum and you're going to eventually consider the topic that comes before you. It's, it's an open meeting violation. So, you have to post it so that people have ample opportunity to present both sides of that to you, especially if it's something you'll consider. If it's an issue that you're not going to consider, then you're probably not running afoul of the open meeting law. So, the posting requirements are arduous, there's, there's no doubt, and it is difficult. But we have to work with those, within those confines intentionally, because if we don't, and we have dialogue with citizens about a matter that will come before you that has not been posted, it is an open meeting law violation. So, that's why we do that. I understand citizens don't want that. I get that totally, because from a, from a citizen's standpoint, they want to come and be able to talk about whatever, and I, and I understand that. But unfortunately, within the confines of this meeting under mass law, we can't do that.
True, but so if a counselor, any counselor wants to have a general meeting of the public, but, you know, they could do that.
One-on-one, absolutely. The problem becomes, in this context, the reason we can't do that is because we have a quorum of you guys. So, yeah, a counselor can talk to any one of their constituents.
But if two or three counselors wanted to get together and say, "Let's, let's have a district, you know, two or three in an at-large," they want to get together and, and do something on their own, they could.
Well, you, conceivably, depending on if those counselors were also part of a committee together, because you could indirectly be creating another quorum. So, my philosophy is always, and I believe in this generally, because I think it's transparency in government, no matter what side of an issue you're on, is always you're better off posting all the issues. So, my advice would be, for these kind of meetings, well in advance, I would advertise it. I would go to your constituents. I would say, "What issues do you want to talk about? Everything's on the table."
Right.
And then just make sure you post it. Like, it's okay, whatever the issue is, and it's okay to have both sides of it. It's just, we have to be so careful to make sure they're posted, especially in that context. And that's what gets difficult. A lot of the time, the public views this as government trying to shield them from having these discussions in public. But the reality is, it's really to give fair notice to everyone on every side of an issue. And so, that's, that's the only thing that I concern myself with. So, I just, I would just want to be careful with that, and I would just want to make sure whoever's running those meetings, they just stay within the confines of that, right? And, and you guys publicize it however you want and get whatever feedback you want from the public. Just make sure you have some idea in your notice to the public, this is what we're going to talk about.
Thank you.
That's all.
Yeah, and I think that's good advice. And similarly, I think we need to figure out as a council, how do we run this meeting? How, how does this work?
Yeah, it's, it's really difficult, because you guys want to talk about all these things, and I understand that. And I think you can. I just think we have to find a mechanism that the public gets engaged before that meeting and is able to provide you guys with whatever that is, just so we, it's literally just a notice, right? So.
Yep. Dr. Perry?
I believe we have scheduled in the past general meetings of the public, but usually, it's, you know, it's not very well attended. And sometimes I think it's a conjunction with our, our state of the town address. Sometimes we combine it with that. So, we have done those types of things before in the past. Again, maybe we need to revisit it, you know, like I say, it's procedurally, and how to run it better going forward to engage more of the public. But we have been following, you know, to that to some degree based on the charter in the past.
Yeah, that's a great point. It's, and that, that was brought up to me, is we are doing these, they're typically topical. The Ruley's might be an example of one coming up. We talked about the fire station at another point. But I think, you know, with, with, with kind of a new council and all of us trying to figure out ways to keep the community more up to date on what's happening, it's an opportunity for us to revisit it, yeah. So, I like the idea of a committee just sort of tackling, you know, kind of how might this work? How do we collect input for the agenda? How do we run the meeting? Where do we put the meeting? Just a recommendation that we could then maybe debate. I'd be curious to hear if there's anyone who thinks of another approach for this.
Mr. President?
Yep, Council Robinson?
Hello. I wonder if this would just be a good topic for Community and Economic Development Committee to take on in an upcoming session. I really like this idea. I think, you know, I definitely can hear some type of these things are hit or miss, you know, but I think it's worth revisiting. I also think that there is a little bit more attention going on in town than maybe there has been in the past, you know, from heightened things from COVID about the schools, you know, and that with, with the downtown revitalization efforts going on. I'm hearing more and more about people like, "Oh, there's stuff going on," you know? So, anyway, but I wonder if that's a potential option to bring that over to the CED committee, and we can kind of work on this together.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I like that idea. Do we have to do a formal motion for that?
Yeah, I think what you would want to do is, if you want to formalize this, I think you would bring it as an ordinance to create this kind of discussion or dialogue, right? So, you're formalizing it. You say, "At this time of the year, the town council shall meet and do the following things." And then you can refer it out to committee and kind of vet how that looks. But I think it would be good as an ordinance if you want to formalize it. Otherwise, you can do it in an informal way. But I think if you want to go the route of, you know, kind of referring it out and go down that path and make this something that happens consistently, probably makes sense to do it as a proposed ordinance.
Great. So, I can take that action and bring it back with the intention of referring it to CED, but certainly other feedback would be welcome.
Yeah.
Yep, Dr. Perry?
Yes, just a thought that came into my head as far as, you know, trying to create a formalized process, again, so we don't violate any open meeting law, is if we were to put something out on social media, you know, to the public, through our, you know, Bridgewater pages and things of that nature, to get people aware of what we're looking for, but then to create something on the town website where people could formally put in their questions, along with contact email address or whatever. Then we could formalize a potential agenda based on those questions and comments, and then obviously maybe confirm those people's attendance through their email when that meeting came on up to make sure that they were present at that meeting. I think that potentially could create some steps to ensure attendance and, you know, discussion for whatever items we're looking to put on an agenda. But I just seem to be some, some thoughts that came into my head regarding it.
That's a great idea. I like that. Thank you. Any additional thoughts on this one? Okay, so I'll take the action to bring back an ordinance, following some of the ideas from Dr. Perry and Council Robinson. Appreciate the feedback on that one. The next one is similar idea, but this is intended to be an opportunity for people to interact with councilors in a, in a small forum where we are not at quorum, to just sort of share feedback that can come, you know, back in front of the council in a more formal way. I know that the school committee has a member that has been tasked with essentially office hours, and the community will meet with that member, and that member will report back in open meeting on some topics that the community is interested in discussing. So, this could be a way for us to, to solicit, you know, kind of more formally and predictably, interact with, with the community. So, maybe something where, like, we rotate through the role, or somebody's in the role. I'm not looking to make a decision on it tonight, more just like plant the seed. Would like us to have some more, more formal sort of connection mechanism out to the community other than that podium and like the big meetings. And I know we do it individually. This isn't intended to replace that at all. It's more of, you know, just sort of a place people can predictably go to, you know, kind of interact with a counselor. Any thoughts on that?
The only thing, Mr. President, the only thing I'm thinking of is, again, it's, it might be difficult to find that consistent time that you could maybe create a rotating schedule for councils to be at, based on everyone's work schedules and things of that nature. Again, I know, you know, like I say, most people do something out in the, in the community to kind of reach out and talk to people. And it certainly would be nice to maybe, you know, grab one of the side offices here for an hour or two during the week. But again, to, you know, find a consistent time that, that the public will know that the councils are available, that we could all kind of help attend to. I mean, some of us might be able to do it, some of us might not be able to, and I don't want to put undue pressure on more counselors when other counselors can't do it. So, it's, that to be, logistically, might be a kind of tougher setup situation outside of trying to just do your own thing. But that's just something, again, that comes to my mind in regards to that topic.
That's helpful. I'm, even as you say that, I mean, even maybe something on the website where we just post our office hour, our individual office hours, or we know we've got a room where we could do them if needed, something like that. Again, just trying to seed the idea for a future conversation, but some way for people to just have a more predictable path to, to us is the intention there. Any additional comments on that?
I mean, I, I mean, I have my little coffee, you know.
It's well-publicized.
Publicized. Sometimes I sit there by myself, and that's the best, those are the best ones, no.
It's good coffee, though.
But no, that, that works. It's just, it lets, I mean, most of the time, people are not going to come to you if it's, if it's a scheduled thing. It's like, they know that I do it. They know that I'm reaching out, and some people do come. But if you schedule it, they're more likely not to come. They want to get you at the grocery store. They want to get you at the transfer station. They want to get you when you're walking your dog or whatever. That's, that's when they see you, and it's like, "Oh, I got a question for you," you know? And that's fine, too. So, I mean, whatever works, but I like number one. Number two, it really is up to us individually to say, "If we want to do something, you can just go ahead and do it." To try to, you know, have a rotating thing, I don't think we need to dictate that. I think that, you know, a counselor can do something on their own if they choose to. But I like, I like number one, but we can talk about both.
Okay, great. Any additional thoughts? All right, I'll take an action on number one. Number two, think about. And even if it's as easy as if you were already doing something like a coffee with a counselor, then maybe we find a way to just put that on the website, so.
That might be the best way to go.
Might be a way for people to just find that stuff, so. Great. All right, thank you. Moving on, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Yes, Councilor George?
So, through you, last Thursday, the review committee did meet, myself, Council Robinson, Council Murphy. What we did was, we reviewed the process of delivering the review, actually, the process of formulating a review, the process of delivering the review, and actually, the review form itself. So, my plan is for our September meeting, for a discussion item, to have a, probably a pretty robust discussion around the review. I'll probably plan if it's okay to get the form out to everyone, just so they can come in prepared in regards to, you know, questions and changes and things of that nature. But we also need to talk about the actual timing and delivery, if we're going to want to keep it as is, which is going to put us way, well under the gun, or if we're going to make some changes. So, that's just on the horizon.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate the effort on that. Yes, Council Chase?
Thank you. Mr. President, yes, just a report from the Rules and Procedures Committee. The committee did meet last week, last Thursday, I believe. We considered the rat control ordinance that had been introduced to the council during the prior session. And we determined that there was more guidance that we're in need of, and we've actually been in discussions with the, with the town manager, and there's more to come on that point. But we do feel the need for additional guidance before we can proceed. So, we're keeping that matter at the, at the committee for the time being.
Great. Thank you for the update. Any additional committee reports? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item L. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item L, legislation for action. The first item we have is Proposed Ordinance D F Y 23 013, zoning ordinance, amend Article 3, Section 23A, planning board. This ordinance has been advertised in the enterprise. The planning board voted five to zero to recommend at their 6/21/23 meeting. I'll defer to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. This zoning change is fairly minor. It changes the position of alternate member, which is defined in the admin code, and a little bit in that what it's proposing is that alternate member can sit on all matters coming before the planning board instead of only site plan. So the alternate member, if a member could not, was either conflicted out or could not attend, then the alternate member could step up and sit for any reason that the planning board is meeting or holding a hearing. It also, the minor thing, but it fixes the naming inconsistency between the zoning ordinance and the admin code. I believe there was, one of them had associate member, and it's actually should be an alternate member. So just fixes that naming convention.
Thank you. This is sponsored by Counsel Chase. Is there anything additional you'd like to add?
No, Mr. President, just the fact that I do support it. I think that it's going to be very expeditious with respect to the planning board's work. It grants them a good deal more latitude, and I think it'll overall be very helpful for the planning board.
Great. Thank you very much. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Mr. President?
Yep.
No, I just want to also echo that, support this wholeheartedly. Again, this is going to make sure in case the potential boards are short a member or two, that they can continue to go forth and don't have to delay any potential decisions that are important to get done in a timely manner. So I strongly recommend this as well.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. I asked for a roll call vote.
Absolutely. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy.
Do we still have Counsel Lindy on the line?
He's just muted.
Counsel Lindy?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item B, Resolution R F Y 24 001, a resolution to apply for, accept, and expend a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Division of Conservation Services, Local Acquisition for Natural Diversity Land Grant Program, Budget and Finance Meeting 8/8/23, prior to town council meeting voted...
We voted two to zero to recommend.
Thank you. And the Finance Committee voted six to zero to recommend at their 7/31/23 meeting. I will defer to the town manager for an update on this one.
Mr. President, this is simply a resolution that's required by the land grant program as a resolution acknowledging application for land grant funding, that the council is approving the application for land grant funding and allowing me to apply for it and then manage those funds if and when we get them.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the town manager? All right. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we can move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Thank you. Item C, Order O F Y 23 065, acceptance of gift, BSU $55,000. Budget and Finance Meeting prior to the town council meeting tonight voted...
We voted two to zero to accept and recommend.
Thank you. And the Finance Committee voted six to zero to recommend at their 7/31/23 meeting. I'll defer to the town manager for an update.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the Bridgewater State Annual Gift, which actually, just due to a timing quirk, I believe we received two within this fiscal year, or I'm sorry, two within a short period, but also in their own fiscal years, I'm sorry. But this is the second gift we've gotten in this calendar year, I should say. And it is, as tradition has, and as their letter that accompanies the gift asks that we divide it between three departments who are most impacted by BSU's presence in town. That's the police department, the fire department, and our roadways department. And we generally, if not always, use these for, to offset a capital purchase of some sort, not to subsidize operations.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Can I ask a question?
Yep. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Counsel Robinson has a question?
I know this comes up every single year, as I think about how, you know, this topic comes through, has been on as well. What is the reason for it staying at the same amount every single year?
That's a hard question to answer, but I think, I think, I don't have an answer. How's that?
Well, so my understanding is this is a starting point, and if councils down the road determine that $3,000 is not enough, councils will have the ability to try to up the amount. I know there were discussions around trying to tie it into the CPI and things of that nature, and I think it got a little complicated in that respect. So I think the Charter Review Committee, you know, looked around, I think as Mr. Ivaldi said, you know, you saw anywhere from zero to, I think, $8,000 is also built into council president, things like that.
Counsel George, I think you might be referring to the one later on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. This is the BSU $55,000.
Oh, the gift, I'm sorry. Damn. All right. Long day. My apologies.
This is a leap.
I'm just going to state it very plainly.
I think I'm a leap.
They're a terrific partner.
I'm sorry.
I think that they're a terrific partner. They're important for our community, but the reality is, is, you know, expensive increase for us every single year, and this gift has remained flat. Not to sound ungrateful, but I just want to state it cleanly that is it feasible to have, you know, a frank conversation about increasing?
Great. Thank you, Counsel Robinson. I think it is an interesting idea. I think it's one that we could probably take up in our conversations with our state reps as well. But it sounds like there isn't a clear answer on that right now. Any additional questions, discussion? Okay, we could move to a roll call vote on Order O F Y 23 0065, the BSU $55,000 grant.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
I think so. Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Great, thank you. The next one is Order O F Y 24 008, transfer order, Broad Street, two lot property purchase. Budget and Finance Meeting this evening recommended...
Two to zero.
Two to zero to recommend. Finance Committee voted six to zero to recommend at their 7/31/23 meeting. I will defer to the town manager for an overview.
Mr. President, the, this sort of goes hand in hand with a resolution that you just voted. This is the actual appropriation of CPC funds to do the actual friendly taking of the two lot property on Broad Street. And I, just as an aside, we got an updated appraisal of that property just today, and the appraisal is now $375,000. The owners have agreed to sell it for something significantly less at $300,000, and then the additional $40,000, I don't believe we will need all of that to cover closing costs and so forth. So that is, and then the grant that you just passed the resolution for, should we be successful in securing that grant, will offset 66% of the purchase cost, and that amount will go back to community preservation funds.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager? All right. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There's none, we can move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item M, old business. I have a logistics question for the town attorney. Jason, just a quick question.
Yep.
So my intention with item A, M, A, B, C, D, and E is to make a motion to keep them all at council?
Yeah.
For one more time, just to give people opportunity to...
Sure.
Can we vote those as a package, or do we have to go through each one?
Absolutely. Yeah, if you're going to, if the motion is for the same thing for all of those, yeah, you absolutely can.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
For these, I'd like to make a motion to vote item A, B, C, D, and E to stay at the council, to be discussed at our next scheduled meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Great. And maybe just to give some context, these are new, and we saw a presentation tonight. I just want to give counselors the opportunity to come up to speed on them before we take any more formal action. So we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All right, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Whew, boy. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Muted.
Counsel Robinson, I think you're muted.
I'm sorry, yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Great, thank you. So we'll reintroduce these at the next meeting for more detailed discussion. Great, that concludes item M. Moving on to item N, new business. We have one item, Order O F Y 24 009, transfer order contractual buyout. I will defer to the town manager for an overview.
Mr. President, these contractual buyouts are actually sick buyback that come when officers, mostly in the police department and fire department, but in this case, we have one for a library employee when they retire. So some of the legacy, they operate under the legacy contracts, collective bargaining agreements. So we're gradually, over the next few years, be paying out sick buyback to those that qualify. But that's, that is what this is.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the town manager? Okay, I would entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So moved.
Target.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item O, citizen comment. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to comment? Please approach the mic, state your name and address. Try to keep the comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Hillwood, 388 Hayward Street. Three items, three new items, kind of. So first of all, thank you to BSU for their generous gift. I have been on the council in years where BSU did not give a gift, and I think it's a generous partnership that they do give a gift regardless of what the amount is. And we can talk in more detail about what their contributions to the community are if anyone has any questions about that, because I spent a long time on budget and finance and studied, you know, their interaction, so I'm quite first. Second item is, as you look at the proposed amendments to our charter, read through the existing charter first, you know, get the context of what's said now, get a context of what the committee did and researched. There's a lot of, there's a lot of paperwork behind that. Get a context of what the new language says. There's some language that's a little bit awkward, and I'll again focus on the term limit language. Anyone that wants to be on the council for 24 years probably needs to get another hobby. And, you know, it's a long time. 10 years is a long time. It probably will never happen, but the language as it currently exists creates a lifetime ban for someone who does early service and then maybe a late service in their lifetime. I'm twice the age of Paul. He's maybe on here for one term, maybe two terms, maybe three terms, but when he's my age, maybe he wants to serve again, and the language that's being proposed may stop him from doing that, even though it's 20 years later. The other thing is, and I used to use Counselor Chase and Counselor Perry as an example because Counselor Perry moved. So he moved from one district to another, and we were under district leadership at that point. And so the language that is in the new proposal, if someone moves from one district to another and becomes a district changeover, they are representing a completely different set of population in the town of Bridgewater. It's a brand new representation, and yet the language in the proposal would limit their ability to serve the new population because of the service of the old population if they move from district to district. And finally, and I'm not picking on anybody because I used to use Counselor Chase's, but Mr. Lindy provides a good use case. Mr. Lindy was appointed to the council for a period, and then he was off the council. In January, he was on, he got elected for a short period. In April, he got elected for a short period. Now, he did not do three full terms, and yet the language that's in the proposal says that he's been elected three times, or appointed and elected three times, and so on his next election, that would be his final election, even though in total, he served less than about seven years. So just take a look at the language of the amendments in context with what they intend to do and with the changing and that sort of thing. On Rules and Procedures Committee, when I was on that committee and we were looking at the, I think it was 2016 changes, we probably spent 100 hours in discussion at the committee level on those changes, and, you know, it was, there was a lot of work. It's a lot of work. Finally, the final item is... Yeah, thank you for voting on the St. Martin. There was one other, now I had my own senior moment, but, yeah, I probably won't be back for a while. Oh, it's actually the discussion you had, which is the citizens being informed about what happens here in this room. I've stepped away now for, what, a couple months? You know, had I not had a conversation with Dennis, I wouldn't have known that tonight was your meeting night. I probably only looked at the agenda because it's like, oh, they're meeting Tuesday and I'm free Tuesday night, you know, what's going on? And then I saw there were a couple of things that, Lake Park and the other things I wanted to get interactive with. I'm comfortable with reaching out to everyone here, including the other folks that are in town. Other people may not be that comfortable. We do offer the opportunity twice a year for citizens to come in and talk and, you know, have that general conversation. I like what Dennis does with his coffee.[1680.71] I like what Dennis does with his coffee. I used to hold office hours that were not well-attended, but you need to, we've had 10 years of the same discussion. How do you reach out to 28,000 people and let them know what's going on and what could impact? Their main concerns are taxes, road conditions, and taxes, right? So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment?
Carlton Hunt, AD Austin, I'll be brief. First of all, thank you, Mr. Moore, for calling, talking to me about some of the agenda items. It was very helpful for me to update. I'm energy committee chair, and those are important to me and to the town. So thank you for that. Number two, thank you, Mr. Gutten, for actually putting the policy out. I look forward to seeing it on the website. We don't need more comments in the social media about things. The last thing, as I'm sitting, listening to you, how you communicate, how do we get people engaged? There are some marvelous, marvelous survey tools that are online. So whatever this committee looks at, think about an online survey tool that has really good questions, so it goes to the town attorney's point, so you create a set of issues that people want to talk about. So use that kind of survey tool, and it's going to take some work. It may involve the IT department, somebody else, but they're out there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none, we will close. Item O, citizen comments. We'll move on to council comments. We'll start with Counselor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, I know that we did receive notice from the town just sometime last week about the status of the, our water storage, given the extended heat, period of excessive heat that we've experienced. Obviously, just in the past day or two, we've had a little rain, but that's really going to be negligible in the big picture in terms of alleviating our water supply problem, and I would just hope that residents continue to heed the requirement that outdoor water uses is very, very limited. They should not be using water for purposes of topping off pools, or certainly not watering lawns with a sprinkler. And I think that if that is adhered to, we'll have a better chance of not experiencing a more dire situation, and I thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chase. Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. No comments tonight. Thank you.
Counselor George?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I've said enough tonight. No comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gallagher?
Got nothing.
All right. Through Zoom, Counselor Robinson?
I just wanted to thank everybody for the discussion tonight, and particularly, Counselor Moore, for your suggestions around community engagement. I think the more we continue to keep trying and looking for additional ways to engage with folks is always a positive. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson. Dr. Perry?
Thank you. Again, I just want to, again, thank Ed Ivaldi for coming in tonight and making his presentation. It was very informative. It was a good review for me as well of what the, what the review committee had put together, and to Mr. President for getting it on the agenda. I know next meeting, I'm going to be bringing up something on the town clerk situation. But ultimately, really good discussion tonight, and I'm glad to see we're going to be moving forward on some of these items. And I think, yeah, that's all I got tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Counselor Lindy, through Zoom?
Yes, sorry, I don't have my picture on, but, and sorry for the roll calls, but it was a good discussion tonight, and I'm really glad to see the community engagement piece as well. I think good communication and good information on the website, and, you know, people are starting to participate. We're lucky enough to have some people come in person, and, you know, just, you know, those two meetings a year, the town, state of the town, town or city or whatever we are, you know, just get the information out there. There are different ways to do it, people that accept it in different ways. I like what Carlton Hunt said about surveys and stuff like that, too, because there's all these new ways to engage, and, you know, it works differently for different people. But thank you for the discussion.
Great, thank you. And I will bring us home. So, just reiterating the comments on communication, I don't know the answer, but I do see the problem. I think if you go on social media, or you bump into people on the street, everyone has a different understanding, and most of them are wrong. And so I think it is our job to figure out a way to just get the correct understanding out so people can make judgment calls and help influence that, especially if you have a former counselor with arguably one of the strongest networks in Bridgewater who doesn't know. It means we've got a lot of work to do to help those who don't have those networks figure out kind of what's happening with government. So, encourage more people to just kind of think about that and bring ideas there. I'd also like to thank Ed for coming back. It was a significant time commitment for him to prepare for the meeting, and also, you know, over the past few years, to just stay involved and keep reminding us about it, and encourage all of the counselors to look at some of the prior discussions at the council to kind of help you understand the current topics and maybe come up to speed on some new ones that you're passionate about. I think, I'll stop it there tonight. Thank you all. All right. So, we do not have executive session tonight, so no item Q, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No discussion.
All right. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
You are adjourned.
All right, thank you, everybody.